And welcome to a special meeting of the Winthrop Town Council, May 31st, 2022, at 7:12 PM here in the Harvey Hearing Room. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Honan.
Here.
Counsel Fusillo.
Here.
Counsel Munson.
Here.
Counsel Belcham.
Here.
Counsel DiMarco.
Here.
Counsel Flakot.
Here.
Counsel Aiello.
Yep.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Here.
President Lutere.
Here. Please rise for the pledge, which will be led by our new town council, our new town manager, Tony Moreno.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we start the meeting tonight, I would like to welcome our new town manager, Tony Moreno, to his first meeting. He has solved all the problems of the town in the last seven days he has been here.
Six days, yeah.
No, we are very excited about the future, and thank you for being here. So tonight's meeting is a special council meeting. There is a Zoom link, which is, the code for that is 898-242-243-60900.
Better do that again.
I will do that one more time. So again, this is a special meeting. The sole purpose of this meeting is to discuss the fiscal '23 budget. With us tonight, we are going to ask the Finance Commission Chair to come up and join us and give a presentation. I will also ask Matt to introduce committee members that are here with us tonight, and obviously mention all the other committee members that took an inordinate amount of time. It's quite impressive to sit in on those meetings and see how much time is really spent. I don't know the exact number, but it had to be in the teens, and they're averaged at least two-plus hours per meeting. And to come up with this 17-page report, which will be presented to the council now, it's just a, it's a very impressive feat, and it's done by people who really care about the town, including our Finance Committee on the Council, Counsel Fusillo, Counsel Honan, and Counsel Belcham, along with the Citizens Finance Committee. It's truly appreciated, and we anxiously look forward to hearing your presentation. This was electronically distributed to the council this past weekend, and this will be on the town's website tomorrow for anyone else who cares to take a look. And again, I'd like to introduce Matt, and I'm not even going to try your last name, Gorkowitz. Gorkowitz. And yeah, if you would like to come up here, maybe we could throw a chair right up.
Am I going to see it on this?
You're going to see it, yes.
Mind if I sit a little sideways on it?
Absolutely, sit anywhere you'd like.
Just so I can see what's up on the screen at the same time. Sorry, does this work for everyone? Thanks. Sorry. Try to do this with only glasses, but we'll see how far I get. So thank you, Council President and Town Council, members of the agency heads. I'd like to first start the presentation by explaining a little bit about the Finance Commission itself. I think there can sometimes be some confusion between the Citizens Advisory Committee and the Finance Committee of the Town Council. The Finance Committee is really the combination of both of those entities that come together per Section 7-3 of the Town Charter, which creates the Finance Commission. I want to personally thank all of the members of the Finance Commission for all of their work and dedication to the process. There was a lot of support and dialogue from each of the members of the Commission, and this report and presentation today would not have been possible without each and every one of them and their commitment to the town. So I think the town is to be very thankful to have a group of residents so dedicated. I personally also want to just call out and thank Karen Chavez, the Chair of the Citizens Advisory Finance Committee, for every email that I sent out. She probably received three, and she responded to every one of them, and she's been a great mentor to me in this process. And so, as the first time going through it, I want to thank her for all her support. The Finance Commission has one main responsibility, which is to file a report with the Town Council regarding the recommendations of the annual town budget, which we've done and submitted to you over the course of the weekend. The Commission, in the course of being able to carry out its function, has access to a lot of information regarding the budget. And I just want to thank interim Town Manager Delhenty, as well as Assistant CFO Robert Powers, for all the time they've spent with us. They've actually given us a lot of access to that information and made it possible for us to be able to do our deliberations and to be able to be thoughtful about some of the recommendations we put before you today. So I want to thank them for that and highlight that for everyone. We set out to begin the process early. We knew that this was going to be a challenging fiscal year, particularly with the amount of one-time ARPA funds and being a sort of post-pandemic budget, there was still a lot of uncertainty about where revenues were going to land. So we wanted to get an early start on this, and we started meeting with the Town Manager and the Assistant CFO on April 7th, so well before, almost a month before, the budget was actually formally presented at the Spring Forum, which happened on April 26th. So we met almost weekly. Towards the end of the deliberations, we were meeting twice a week to go over the various information we received from department heads, as well as the interim Town Manager and the Assistant CFO. And so, you know, we scheduled most of our time around the deadlines, which, as you know, are in charter. So no less than 60, you know, the town has no less than 60 days, 30 days to, I'm sorry, 60 days before the start of the fiscal year, the budget needs to be filed. And then the Town Council, of course, has 45 days after it's filed to adopt the budget. So that obviously were, those were obviously some key dates by which we had to organize our work, and we did so. And you can see sort of the calendar here that we followed in doing so. We, early on, sent out an invitation for all department heads to meet with the Finance Commission. So every department had received an invitation. We asked that some of the larger departments meet with us, and you can see the list on the left were all the departments that we met with. And the ones on the right, while they were optional, I don't want folks to think that we did not discuss or review those budgets. We actually had an opportunity with the Town Manager and Assistant CFO early in the process to review those budgets, and we had actually the Assistant CFO Robbie Powers come back on a number of occasions to discuss some of these other budgets, even though the department head themselves were not necessarily presenting a formal testimony to us. So it's been a, it's been a long process, but it's been over a short period of time to cover a lot of information. I want to talk a little bit about some of the budget highlights. I think overall, the Finance Commission thought that the budget filed by the Town Manager was a thoughtful one and actually supported a lot of the core mission that agencies are responsible for carrying out and for delivering adequate services to the town and to the residents. The budget, just to highlight a few of the things, increased the school department by $900,000. The Town Manager budget was increased to provide sufficient salary to attract a qualified Town Manager, as we clearly have, welcome. We increased salaries of key positions that have been a problem for the town to retain, including the CFO and Treasurer, which have now been posted, which I think is very exciting news for the town. We increased an inspector position in the Town and the Building Department from part-time to full-time. There's a real backlog and need there. We established some positions at the Department of Public Works, which are needed, and those positions were temporarily eliminated in FY '22 to help balance the budget. I don't think the DPW got all the positions they wanted back, but were able to get a couple. And we're also pleased that the town is embarking on a IT strategic plan. This was a recommendation that came out of the Finance Commission last year. The complete pay and class study is also very important. We've had a lot of discussions both last year and this year among the Finance Commission members about needing a classification study. And then the enterprise fund fee study, I think, is also very important, and I think is somewhat timely, given some of the discussions we might have around some of the indirect rates and charges that are being proposed in this budget. There are, however, so there are a couple of slides here that, in the interest of time, I probably won't spend too much time on. Total revenues represented by the interim Town Manager at the Spring Forum, obviously nothing is, this information is taken right from those presentations, so I'm not going to spend too much time on that. I will talk a little bit about general fund expenditures on this slide, about more than half of the expenditures in the town's general fund support town departments, which total about $33 million. The Town Manager in the Spring Forum actually provided much more detail in his presentation on the budget for each of these various departments, but you can see him listed out here. The non-departmental shared expenses and other is a big part of that $33 million, more than half. And, oh, can you advance to the next slide? Sorry. Next one. There we go. Sorry about that. Pay a little bit better attention. And so, yeah, so about, as you can see from this slide, oh, one more. Nope. More than half of the general fund is spent on some of the town departments, but obviously the non-departmental shared expenses and others represent a big portion of that at almost $19 million. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, because that's some of the areas where we've seen some of our largest increases, and we've also seen potentially some of our exposures going forward. If you could advance to the next slide. The other half of the, the remaining portion of the town budget goes to the school department at $23.7 million. One thing I think that's worth pointing out is, I think, an interesting analysis. When you look at some of the other areas of the budget where we spend money on education-type services that aren't necessarily part of the school department, you can see that, you know, the Education Department could, is, the amount of money we spend on education is quite substantial and represents almost 58% of the budget when you take into account all of the health insurance for school employees. But beyond that, when you look at the pension and you look at sort of the debt service that's, we have on both the Miller Field as well as the school building. So when you add that all up, you know, there's about 58% of our budget going to fund educational-type services, and that represents about a $1.5 million increase over FY '22. So while you see the school department going up by 900, education has been clearly a big priority of the town, and you can see it marveled throughout the rest of the budget. Some of the cost drivers that I wanted to highlight, again, school department going up by $900,000 is one of the larger items in the budget. Employee health benefits is one that's gone up substantially over fiscal year '22, and it's also an area where I'll flag a little bit later as a potential exposure. We've seen the need to have to increase funding for that in this fiscal year, and with the new rates proposed by the GIC, there are some, you know, substantial increases over FY '22. The school departments go up by $418,000, and the town departments $124,000 over FY[812.25][812.25]'22. The Northeast Regional Vocational School increases by $150,000, which is a substantial amount, given its size. $82,000 of that is just to cover the debt service on the new school building. That increases to $250 in FY '25, and by FY '26, the debt service on that will cost a town about $454,000 annually. And I think that's something worth noting, because it does represent a bit of a structural deficit going forward if, in fact, there isn't sufficient revenues to help cover that. So we're going to need to grow revenues or reduce expenses in order to accommodate an expense like this, because it's one that's more or less locked in. The other area I wanted to talk a little bit to is on the shared expenses, the $18 million line that I had referenced previously. For the town, shared, they go up by about $1.4 million. Property insurance alone went up almost 26% year-over-year, and that's another area we'll flag as a potential exposure. Typically, renewals happen in the spring around May, and so while we have a pretty good baseline for what we think the increases will be, they're not locked in yet. Additional increases for electricity, fuel, and heat have been budgeted, but it's unclear as to whether or not those increases will be enough. And of course, the salaries are, we funded an additional $274,000 this year. That's on top of $450,000 next year, and as we get caught up and as we enter into contracts with union positions that are, that are out of their, outside of their time terminated, contracts have terminated, we'll, we'll see if that's sufficient. So again, some of the funding exposures, I won't repeat it. Employee health benefits are one that I think the council should probably keep an eye on throughout the year and probably expect some periodic updates from the Town Manager and CFO, just to monitor those. I think property insurance is another one. And then, I don't have it listed here, but of course, our spending on fuel and energy, I think, will be something you'll need to monitor very closely. So I think the Finance Commission hopes that there'll be an opportunity to talk about creating, you know, a dashboard or something that allows for these items to be tracked fairly easily throughout the year. I want to spend a few moments, or most of the time, just talking about some budget amendments that we've recommended in our report to you. Overall, as I mentioned, the Commission is pleased with the recommendations and didn't find a lot of concerns when meeting with the various departments. I mean, sure, there are certainly needs beyond what we can fund in this budget, and that's, you know, certainly to be expected. But we think this, the budget does a good job balancing the needs of the various departments, and at no point did we feel as though any department was significantly underfunded or would be in a position not to be able to deliver services to the residents of Winthrop. However, we did recommend a few, what I'll call, small changes. The first is to address a couple of shortfalls in some areas, and there's two items, which I'll talk about in a moment, where we're asking to put a little bit more money to prevent what might be some exposures later in fiscal year. We talked about and are recommending reducing some of the growth in our indirect charges, and we are asking for that to happen while, at the same time, we do a more comprehensive review of the town's methodology and allocation for indirect. I'll talk a little bit more about each of these. And then the last part of the recommendation, as I think about it, is coming up with some offsetting reductions, of course. And, you know, we have, we're a bit constrained in our ability to make recommendations, and so we need to make sure that anything we propose to you is offset. And so we do have some areas where we think we could offset, and we hope those and expect that those offsets will not, again, disrupt services or have major impacts on the abilities town to deliver services. So let me talk about the funding increases. The first, I think, is one that can happen without any additional money, because it was budgeted in FY '22, and that's a part-time administrative assistant in the public health departments. In our deliberations, I think we all felt that the Council on Aging and Veterans Agent needed some additional resources, and there is a part-time position that was funded in FY '22 in the public health line, and we're asking that that funding be utilized in FY ' '23 as part of the base for '23 to fund that part-time position. That could be a potential floating position that could service both Council on Aging and Veterans Agent. So that's one that we're recommending move forward in FY '22. We're asking that the Town Council consider creating an emergency energy fund. And while the amount that we're suggesting at 25 million is not a considerable amount, it should hopefully provide, 25,000, I'm sorry. I have to apologize. I work at, I work at an agent that's much, that's in the billions and millions, and so I'm not used to talking in the smaller numbers. I apologize. So 25,000. And beyond that, there was considerable conversation with the Finance Commission about making sure that we have some accountability around our fuel consumption, particularly in the environment we're in. And so, we would ask that the Town Council allow the Town Manager to use some of these funds that are in this reserve or energy fund, emergency energy fund, to put in some measures that would allow us to track the usage of these. In the past, I understand, there was a card system and a camera system. I'm not suggesting that that's what needs to happen, but we're suggesting that there be some measures put in place to make sure that we can track, track the fuel. And that was something the Commission felt very strongly about, and again, hoping that if this fund is created, it would give you some opportunity to be able to use some of those resources to do that. And in inspectional services, this is an item that is historically underfunded. It's about, it's been funded for $11,500 in the proposed budget, but historically, we've been spending closer to $20,000, $25,000. I think this year, we're going to spend $30,000 on the purchase of services line, which is really the rat baiting. And that's an important service that the inspectional services provide, and something that we thought we ought to just correct and make sure it gets funded. By the way, I think, you know, we've all recognized that this budget also corrected a few other historical underfunding, street lighting and other things got built into this budget that had historically not been accounted for, and the Town Manager and Council have had to find money throughout the year to sort of just fix problems that they knew sort of existed. So this is sort of one of those that have been hanging out there, and we think in the same vein, it'd be nice to sort of button this one up and make sure that it's built into our base going forward. So those are sort of three recommendations. The chart here is only listing the two, because as I mentioned, the FY, the part-time position at public health is already built into the base. And so there's about $39,080 that we would add to a couple of departments. With respect to indirect charges, I'll take a minute on this one. Indirect charges to the enterprise funds increase from 548,000 in FY '22 to 732. That's about a 34% increase in one year on indirect charges. Now, for those of you, and I think the memo outlines it hopefully fairly clearly, which is, you know, what indirect charges are. Indirect charges are charges that are charged to our enterprise funds, and it's money that's transferred from the enterprise funds to the general fund. It's really a mechanism for the general fund to recover costs. So there are certain expenditures that happen in the general fund that, you know, it could be utilities, it could be time of any of you, it could be administrative resources that are expenditures that happen in the general fund, but then go to support the enterprise fund. So the goal, of course, is to always have some cost recovery so that you can recoup those funds from the enterprise funds. And those enterprise funds should be able to support the cost of paying for those services that are borne by the general fund. So that's essentially what we're talking about when we're talking about indirect charges. So anytime you make a change to an indirect charge, what you're really doing is you're reducing revenue to the general fund. You may be reducing the expenditure in the enterprise fund, but as a result, you're reducing revenue in the general fund. And so that's what we're talking about here a little bit. One of the things that was, I think, most surprising is that as we were meeting with our department heads, I think there was a lot of confusion about the methodology and allocation used by the town to set indirect rates. Most of them didn't understand what was included and couldn't understand why the charges were going up. On the other hand, I think in talking with the Town Manager and the Assistant CFO, there's probably a merit-based argument to be made that indirect charges need to go up, and perhaps the enterprise funds weren't necessarily paying for covering the true cost of what the general fund has been providing. But what is clear is that there wasn't a lot of good understanding, and there weren't any clear policies or procedures that we could look to to help guide our discussion. So part of our recommendation here is to potentially, again, pump the brakes and see if we can do, make some reductions to the indirect funds, recognizing that they probably do need to go up, but would like to have a much more robust process for how they're set. And I would just say, it wasn't just department heads, we even had, I think, at some point constituents of town councillors jumping in and sharing with us their confusion around indirect rates. And, you know, the Division of Local Services is very clear that there should be a clear process, and it should be done at the time the budget's adopted, so that everybody understands what's built into those, into those rates. I think another thing that's a bit confusing is that, in some cases, the indirect items, the things that you would find, the services that you would find in the indirect items, for some enterprise funds are broken out and itemized, and in others, they're not. And so when you look at the enterprise funds, what the indirect charges represent is a little bit different for each fund. So again, I think there's an opportunity here to step back and make some real improvements going into the next fiscal year. So what we're recommending across the board is that we reduce some of the charges by, by about $48,000. You can see here the Parks and Rec, the Rink, and the Harbor Master indirect charges being reduced by these amounts. We weren't proposing to reduce the indirect rates for the solid waste of the ferry fund, in part because those were two fairly new funds that were, enterprise funds that were created, and so this would be sort of a base year for them. And so we thought that that made sense, that those amounts be charged. There's no comparison, and it's hard to tell whether or not, there was no real baseline before that. So we're not proposing any charges in those. And we are proposing a couple of changes, charges in the water and sewer, but I can, those will be offset by some other reductions we're proposing later on. The offsetting reductions to fund all of this, so if you look at our proposal going back, can you go back for one more slide? So as I mentioned, we had expenditures of $38,000 to increase some, a couple line items, and now we have an exposure of $48,000, which is a reduction of revenue to the general fund. So those two proposals total $87,500. And if you go to the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about how we then fund the $87,500 that we proposed earlier on. One is that OPEB, we're proposing that to not fund, this budget proposes to start funding our OPEB liability by putting $25,000 in out of the general fund. It also proposes putting about $21,000 of enterprise money into the OPEB liability. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and it's really sort of, it's really similar to our unfunded pension liability, but it's the unfunded pension liability of healthcare for our future retirees and our workforce. And there's a requirement that we start funding that. But I think the plan has been, as it's been discussed all along, that we were going to redirect some of our pension funding to fund OPEB once it's paid off in 2026. And I would say, you know, I didn't mention it when I was talking about some of the other positive things about this budget, but one of the things that you can all feel really proud about is how aggressively the town has paid down its pension liability. I think this is one area where there are probably many other towns to look at Winthrop and feel as though we're in a pretty good position and would like to be in our position. So there are potentially resources available to start funding this, and if that was the plan, then it seemed as though dedicating these resources at this time didn't make a lot of sense, and it was really somewhat insignificant in comparison to the overall liability. And so we thought there were other pressing needs that the town should be maybe focused on, and so we're recommending that we not fund the $25,000 towards the OPEB liability, and that we stay the course and wait until our pension liability is funded. Reduction of a procurement stipend. The new town manager has come to the position with a lot of experience in strategic sourcing and has, I guess, agreed to serve as the town's procurement officer, which is something that is actually required as a designation. There had been a stipend of $11,000 budgeted for that, and we're proposing to reduce that stipend. The next is the subsidy to the Parks and Rec. So one of the things you've noticed in the budget filed by the Town Manager is that there was a subsidy of $50,000 from the general fund to the Parks and Rec fund. At the same time, the indirect charges in the Parks and Rec fund went up by $61,000. And so by making the adjustments that we're proposing in the indirect charges, we're able to reduce the subsidy to Parks and Rec and still have the enterprise fund remain in balance. And so we're proposing to reduce that from 50 to 25,000. And then the last item, which is veterans' benefits, this is an account that, I just want to be very clear, will not run deficit. The benefits owed to veterans will be paid, and they will receive the services they're entitled to. This is an account that, for the last three years, has been declining in terms of the benefit line. I think it was at one point, I think in '20, we were spending close to $50,000. That number's gone down to something closer to 30 last year. I think year-to-date spending has only been about 22 to 25 for this year. So I may not, don't hold me to those numbers, those may be a little bit, 30 this year. So the number has been coming down. I think we budgeted close to 50, 50 or 55 for this year. So we felt that that was an area where we could make an adjustment based on what we perceive to be a caseload trend, really. So you can see in this chart, all of those items add up to the 87.5. So based on the recommendations to, again, reduce indirect charges and increase funding for a couple of areas where we think there are some exposures and some liabilities, we would propose reducing these items, which, again, I think could be done without, in disrupting any programs or services that residents rely on to fund where are some liabilities. The other thing I will just mention, again, I said that the OPEB impacts both the general fund and the enterprise fund. So there's still $21,000 of expenditures in the OPEB funds that would be reduced if we decide not to fund OPEB, and the proposal would be to use those, have those funds be available to be applied to other expenses in those funds. And a couple of cases, like the solid waste that'll be redirected to help support the DPW director's salary, which we're proposing to transfer to the fund. And then for the sewer and water, it would also propose to offset some of those indirect charges. And actually, if you go back to the table for a moment, there's one that I forgot to mention, which is the $14,500. So we are proposing to allocate So we are proposing to allocate a bit more of the DPW director's salary to the solid waste fund. That's one I forgot to pull it out, but it is there and it adds up into the 87.5. We think because of the amount of time spent on the solid waste fund, it was a proper application of that. Right now, I think the salary is divided between, it's a third, a third and a third. It's the general funds, sewer, water and...
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer, that's a third, a third and a third. And so we're proposing to reduce the general fund portion and put $14,500 on the solid waste, thus relieving some of the pressure on the general fund. But those items would add up to the 87.5. Just to sort of end, there are a series of other recommendations, which the council spent a number of, a bit of time on, and I'll just go through them quickly if time permits. The first is the structural deficit that the town is experiencing. As you know, part of the revenues that are being collected, $450,000 of ARPA funds are being used to support operating expenses of the budget. That represents a structural deficit for the town and not a practice that I think we can continue to do. At some point, we need to reconcile that. And there has been, you know, I think, a practice where, you know, you try to project your revenues a bit conservatively with the hope that as they come in higher, we can, you know, use the monies that have been programmed in for the operations for either one-time resources or not at all. But I think if revenues are, there's a bit of a gamble there and I think, you know, if we're seeing revenues soften a little bit, that becomes a bit more of a problem going forward. I talked a little bit about the indirect charges to the enterprise funds. I think the thing I would say here about this recommendation is really developing a policy that is clearly understood, that has some timeframes around it in terms of when the budget is being adopted, I think would probably be best practice, but as long as I think there was a better understanding. I think in the end, if there is a recognition that the indirect funds need to accommodate and cover more of the services being provided from the general fund, then perhaps we need to think about a phased-in approach. You know, 30, 40% increases each year may be a bit much for the enterprise funds to absorb. And so if that is the result of the comprehensive study, then perhaps the commission would recommend a more phased-in approach where it was clearly understood and built in. The implementation of the One Barrel Trash Program, I think the commission felt very strongly that we needed to move forward with this recommendation. And, you know, we're asking the town manager to assess the resources needed to be able to make that happen. And I think we've put out a date of August 1st that we'd like to see the One Barrel Program implemented, which we know is a very tight timeframe, but we feel that without some deadline set, that this will kind of linger on and we'd like to see this implemented. The next one, Long Range Capital Plan and Life Cycle Analysis, I think this also dovetails a little bit with the next recommendation, number five. But I think we recognize that there's a need to perhaps do more capital planning and focus on the life cycle of our assets, particularly as it relates to water and sewer, our municipal buildings and our transportation. And I think, you know, you could look at each of those as potentially needing separate plans. But having those types of plans in place, I think, creates a little bit of predictability in terms of how we issue debt and use our one-time capital resources. But it also puts the town in a much better position to be able to advocate to state, federal and other entities what our needs are over the longer term and hopefully get some shared revenue or shared experience in terms of how we address those. The next item is somewhat related in that we also felt that there was a need for creating a new division within the DPW that's focused on sort of our municipal parks and our tree planting and maintenance program or potentially lack of one. And I think the real, the discussion around this was the business, the Center Business District as one example, and Miller Field is another. These are assets that the town has spent considerable amount of money on and at this point has no funding in the budget to maintain them, nor is there even a plan at this point, again, a life cycle analysis that suggests how often these elements of these assets need to be replaced. And so in addition to having some plans in place, we think that there should be a division dedicated to these as well. And again, I think that dovetails to our next recommendation on the tree maintenance funding. I just want to say, we've heard a lot from residents throughout the town about the importance of tree planting and maintenance. We know right now that the DPW across all of its line items probably spends, you know, a little, close to $30,000 on tree maintenance. And, you know, we recognize the need to potentially do more. Fortunately for the town, the Winthrop Foundation has come through with $75,000 for additional tree planting this year. And I think that gives us perhaps a little bit of a glide path and some breathing room to figure out how a new division within DPW could potentially take this on and cover some of our other existing needs, which are already potentially problems. Like I said, the Center Business District and Miller Field, those are assets that are already deployed and being used. And so we need to sort of prioritize those as well. We continue to have a few repeat recommendations, our efficiency and effectiveness proposal to really look at strategic sourcing, making sure that we're buying off contracts, making sure that agencies are, to the extent possible, pooling resources and so that we're leveraging as much of the $71 million this town spends as we can to get the best price and to potentially have savings. Solar credits is one that was in our report last year and we felt that we didn't have a real understanding of these solar credits. Again, this goes back a little bit to our efficiency effectiveness and contracting. You know, we put these solar panels, solar panels, we put these, this program in place but don't necessarily know whether it's working or what the benefits are. And so I think we need to unpack that a little bit more and we're recommending a more of an analysis there. Sick and vacation liability, the town does have a roughly $600,000 sick and vacation liability in part based on some contracts that provide for that liability. And so we're asking, a couple of things happen here. One is that we have more transparency around our sick and vacation liabilities, that they get reported annually. We'd like to see a policy perhaps developed so that as you enter into contracts, there's some sense as to what's expected around these types of liabilities. And I think most importantly, we want to begin funding this. There wasn't, I think, some discussion and a real attempt to try to put some money at it this year, but this is one of those liabilities I would flag as potentially needing some funding. We talked with the assistant CFO and we think that there's a special revenue fund that could be set up so that we could start to put a little bit of money in this each year and get to the point where we are pre-funding it. And then, of course, the fire and public safety facility is something that is also a repeat recommendation. And I think there's been a lot of discussion throughout the years about the need for this, whether it be a replacement of our existing fire stations or a public safety complex for the town. But this is one that has certainly seemed to be a priority and one that is long overdue. We're spending a lot of money and resources on the maintenance of these buildings and they're in pretty rough shape. And again, so those are the other recommendations. Everything has been detailed in the memo we provided to you. I hope it was clear and I hope this helps add a little bit more context to what you perhaps read. I don't know if there's a question and answer period, but happy to make myself available for that if the council president so deems. And again, I just want to, once again, recognize Karen Chavez, Brent Farrell, who are here today from the Finance Commission. And I just want to end where I began by thanking them for all their support. Everybody really contributed. It was, the conversations were, I think, thoughtful and everybody, I think, has their fingerprints on these recommendations and couldn't be more happy to work with the group. So thank you.
Thank you. I would like to obviously thank you, Matt. Incredibly well-written plan and thank the committees. Just a few things that I'd like to go over and then I'll open up a question, so if you can't stay there, that would be great. Start with the schools a little bit and just so people understand, you know, this budget shows an increase of $900,000 to the school allocation and also does show an increase of about $500,000 to the benefit line for the schools. And that's a lot of money, 1.4 million. It's still creating a deficit, which I will ask the superintendent a little bit later about. It's still going to create roughly a $600,000 deficit from a level service budget. And it also does, I believe, and I will ask the superintendent to confirm, structural deficits there as we have in the town. So it's a lot of money and people look and say, wow, a million and a half or 900,000, whichever way you want to look at it. But, I mean, we have to look at the whole picture and the needs of the school system to educate our children. And so I think that's something we need to talk about. Matt also did mention OPEB and that's a liability where we're, you know, we're lagging as 99% of the other communities in the state are, but we do have a plan. I do think that the recommendation coming out of FinCom is the correct recommendation. We are very fortunate to be in a good position with our pension liability that, I believe as of now, it's December of 2027, December 2026, fiscal '27, that our pension will be fully funded, which gives us, which will give us flexibility. And I've said this before, I think we have opportunities to reallocate that money in different ways that will help us, whether it be to fund our portion of the new vocational school without any, without any debt exclusion to the town. It will also give us much more flexibility in starting to fund our OPEB in a much better vein. Matt also mentioned solid waste and talked a little bit about the DPW salary. I don't want anybody thinking that, and Matt did describe this later, that it's not the whole salary, it's a portion of the salary. And as the overseer or the controller of that enterprise fund, I think the FinCom thought, and again, correctly, that a portion of that salary should go to that enterprise fund. Matt did talk about the structural deficit of the town and we mentioned it again last year, that that's $450,000 that will be coming to an end very quickly, that we're going to have to find other funds to replace that. I couldn't agree more and my strongest thought this year, or one of my strongest thoughts for the following year along with fiscal '23 is going to be setting up some sort of maintenance department or I like to call it a parks department, where we are going to be looking at and being proactive with our municipal properties. We've been told by the DPW director for a couple of years now that there are definite costs and that will be incurred for maintaining the CBD and it could be $30,000 to $50,000 a year. Now, some of that might not be spent every year, but it might be on different items that have to be replaced in a timely manner. And we've talked about Miller Field and the life expectancy of that field is roughly seven to eight years. We're already four years into it, the cost to replace it is somewhere around 800 grand and we haven't put anything towards that yet. And these are things we have to think about and I think it's important, as Matt stated and FinCom stated, that we really, we spend an awful lot of money on new assets for this town and we have to be able to maintain them properly. And again, totally agree with Matt on the fire and public safety building and I think there's some meetings set up in the very near future that hopefully we will have some information on, some thoughts on that. But at this point, I will open it up for questions from the councilors, from Matt or the Finance Commission. I'll just go down. Vice President, Roger, do you have anything right now?
Just, excuse me, thank you, Matt and committee for all the work. This is, you know, it's, they say that being on the council is a thankless job, but I feel like being on the FinCom is even more of a thankless job in a lot of ways, but so thank you. But could you just go back and sort of explain, when you're reducing a indirect cost, could you just kind of like go over that whole thing one more time and how that affects the general fund, just for the folks in the road here? Just, you know, it's not an actual, I'll just let you explain it, but yeah.
Sure. So let me start with what the charges represent. Again, you know, there are a number of costs, expenditures that are made out of the general fund that support the enterprise fund. You know, the general council, there's no general council in any of these enterprise funds, but they benefit from one. In some cases, utilities, insurance is funded centrally. I talked about the shared services line on for our property insurance going up 26%. That's one where in some cases you may see it in enterprise fund and others you may not. But there are those types of expenses, you know, all of, you know, the CFO's time, the town manager's time, across all of these different funds. And in some cases, utilities, in some cases, utilities might be provided to these funds. So there's a whole host of expenses that occur across different line items in our general fund that support these enterprise funds. And without those resources, these enterprise funds would not be able to carry out their function. And so typically, you would develop a methodology and a methodology would look at trying to identify each of these expenses in the general fund and come up with what portion of that should be charged off to these, to these funds. And it should be a very clear, transparent sort of calculation and methodology. And then you would essentially assess an indirect charge to these enterprise funds. And so as an enterprise fund, as an owner of an enterprise fund, you would develop a budget and you would make sure that your revenues are sufficient to not cover, not only cover all your core services, but to cover these indirect charges, which are really just paying for services that are provided by other town resources. And when you pay that, you're really paying the general fund. So you're paying back the town for services they provide. And so that becomes a revenue to the town. So if you actually were looking at slide nine, or if you were looking at the general fund revenues, you'll see that general fund revenues total 56.9 million. And on there, there's another revenue line that totals 1.35 million and that revenue line is, you know, roughly, depending on whose numbers you use, six to 700,000 of indirect charges that are coming into that. And so when it comes into the general fund, it's just a general revenue that's available for expenditure and reappraisal. And so when you start to reduce those indirect funds, you're really reducing revenue to the general fund. So you have to make that up for dollar for dollar.
Okay.
If you increase it, you gain revenue to the general fund, which is a positive thing, but you could be putting pressure on the enterprise funds. You could be imposing higher costs on constituents who use those enterprise funds. You could also be draining balances on those enterprise funds. We are trying to, I think, as a goal, have reserves in those enterprise funds. I don't think we've reached that goal yet, but this sort of has the ability to impact that. Now, what's also interesting is in this year, there is a fee study that's out and due back. And it would be, I think, you know, an opportune time to be able to tie that fee study in with a new methodology for how we calculate these indirect costs and how we apply them and have it be sort of a more holistic approach as to, you know, what the enterprise fund should be bearing for costs. I hope that answered your question.
It does. And just a quick follow-up. So when we say that we're decreasing an enterprise's fund indirect cost item, that's really coming from the general fund, right? So that the amount going to the fund from the general, that's what we're doing.
You're reducing an actual cost to those who maintain and operate those enterprise funds, but you're reducing revenue to the general fund, which means we have to make it up, which is why it's part of the 87,000 we're proposing we need to find.
Sure. Thank you.
So really simply too, so say you have an enterprise fund and they don't have a payroll specialist or whatever, right? So they're using the town's payroll specialist, so they're writing the checks every week for them to get paid. And let's say the payroll specialist made $25,000 a year. And it was thought that, you know what, probably 1% of their time, they spend writing, making checks for whatever enterprise fund. So we're going to charge them 250. And this year, we said, you know what, it's probably 3%. So now it's 750. So we're just, I think, the FinCom is just trying to get, what is the right number? We want to be as transparent as possible, but we don't want to be overly burdensome to the enterprise fund or we want to be fair to the town as well. So it's just trying to find that balance and I think they tried to do that this year and I think FinCom just thought it was a little too aggressive right away. In the end, it might be even more than what was proposed this year, it might be the real number. But I think the thought is to get a program in place and to give the enterprise funds time to understand this is what it is and have them, have a plan to, you know, raise their rates somehow or another. I mean, it's just, it's a cycle that's just going to keep going around, but it is only fair to have an enterprise fund pay for the services that they have.
Right. And just, right, with the lack of a process, I applaud the effort to create a process and do it in-house, but I think that's the larger point, is that we need something more sustainable moving forward. So, yeah, I think that's...
Council Flockhart? Council Ayello?
A fair amount of questions, but let me...
A fair amount of questions, but let me get at them and then you can decide you want to interrupt. So again, thank you and for the entire commission for the work it did. This is an extraordinarily comprehensive document and I understand how difficult they are to pull together. So just my hats off to a whole bunch of you and Matt, you in particular. So let's just follow up on the enterprise fund thing for a second. So the theory is that it should be sort of a wash for both parties, right? That the cost that the town is experiencing supporting the enterprise funds should be borne by the enterprise funds, but we shouldn't put undue costs onto the enterprise funds nor should the enterprise funds pay below the cost they're imposing there, right? So it should be there. And I know this discussion has been discussed. I saw Steve Cirillo's memo from, I think it was last April, when he sort of described for the first time, at least to my knowledge, I wasn't on the council at that time, the need to get the indirect charges done correctly. And I'm a little bit worried about putting it off for another year. And I'm not proposing, so nobody should get agitated, that we should just shift burden over the enterprise funds with and sort of say, you're on your own tough luck. But from a perspective of being a manager of an enterprise fund and knowing that something is likely to come at you later, wouldn't we be better off have, let's say, enterprise fund X, we originally were going to push $5,000 more costs over to their side? You could also provide a $5,000 subsidy to them in this current year. So they would see on their books, hmm, I got a line item. And the goal of the line item is to get, the goal of my enterprise fund is to avoid that $5,000 subsidy if I can, so that I feel like I'm a sustainable enterprise. That's more of a signal to a manager and a management team as they're thinking about their operation and team themselves up for next year. And I'm not opposed, by the way, to, we provide, I guess on a regular basis, subsidies to parks and rec. I'm not opposed to the council allocating subsidies to parks and recreation to keep the rates low. But as long as we're transparent about it and do that, I think that's effective. So that was just my thought of how I would approach it. I don't know if it's too late in the cycle to sort of think about that, but it would certainly put the managers of the enterprise funds, I think, more clearly having to think about this as opposed to maybe next year, the council changes mind and won't care about it and we'll be back in the same situation where everybody is surprised and not wanting to deal with it. So, and you can choose to answer, you don't have to answer.
Just a quick to that, Joe, and I'll let Matt answer as well. I think you're 100% right. I think the thing is, they don't know what the real cost is. And so we could make an arbitrary number. And, you know, when Steve first did this budget, I think Steve's goal was to find a million plus dollars for the town. And it's very easy to do when you say, hey, let's hike up indirect costs. Let's say on that we are going to have many more local receipts coming in because it looks like that's the right thing to do and it lowers free cash. And I think he did a really good job at doing that and I think he found a million dollars in a day. But is it really finding it and is it 100% actual? I think on the local receipts, you know, theoretically, we do receive a good portion of free cash from local receipts, but it's very hard to be exact on it and you don't want to be too aggressive. And I think on the indirects, I think what the FinCom is saying, they agree with you. And I think all of us saying that we want to find what that true cost is, but we don't have an exact formula. And we, I know they did, I know I have too, that, you know, is it simple, is it as simple as saying, hey, let's go to, you know, another community and see what they do? And it's, nobody has the same answer. Is it 1%, you know, some people do use 1% of the cost of, you know, the treasurer's department goes to an indirect cost and then it's split in? Is it number of employees you have? So I think the thought is to say, hey, they're not, they're cutting, they're proposing to cut them, cut the original increase, which was 34%. The increase is still substantial. I think it's somewhere around 20. So it's not cutting the indirects as of now, but it's getting us on a path to say, let's try to come to some sort of consensus. It's, I guess, I don't know if there is an exact answer, but to come to the exact consensus as to what that is, let the enterprise funds know and if you need to have a subsidy, you need to have a subsidy if that's the way it ends out. But it also gives them time to have a plan to say, you know what, maybe at Parks and Rec, I can afford to go up $10 or I, you know, whatever enterprise fund it happens to be. But if Matt wants to add anything else.
If I could, you know, I can withdraw the suggestion, but I'm just trying to get to a point of, how do we make sure that we have, what are the things that have to get done and who doesn't to make sure that we've got an indirect cost schedule available early enough in the cycle of next year so that nobody pulls a Stanislavski and says, oh my God, I don't understand it, I don't see this. Who is, where does it happen? How's it respond? I think you've got a question coming from the audience or someone wants to.
Karen, if you want to respond and then.
Well, I was just going to say, I understand what Council Ayello was saying, but I think that that's the whole point of this. We realize that the indirect costs have to be prorated according to what they actually use. But we're trying to not make it as severe this year. And I'm hoping, and I'm sure that the town manager is taking all of this into consideration, the beginning of the budget season, whenever he's going to start it, with September 1, he is going to make these managers aware that yes, your indirect costs probably will rise because we're going to have a methodology to provide that.
So should the methodology be clearly in place by September 1?
I don't want to say September 1 because I don't know what his timeframe is, but certainly by the time we get into budget season.
And is that, is that an analysis that the town manager does and presents to the council? I'm just not sure how.
I think the town manager and cohorts with a CFO and the assistant CFO will have to get together, go over their budget strategy and then propose plans. I think it, you know, I don't think the council has to approve of how they're going to ask for indirect costs, but I think it would behoove the town manager and the CFO and the assistant CFO to ask the council to get the council's thoughts because in the end, the council's appropriating body. But I think, I have all the confidence in the world that the CFO is going to come up with a methodology along with Robbie and along with a new town manager that's going to be accurate as best to the ability. And it's probably going to add to increased cost in indirect costs, which helps the budget, helps the general fund, I guess. But it puts the burden more on enterprise funds. And we're not trying to be artificially unfair to anybody, we just want people to pay their fair costs.
Oh, that's right. Do you have a sense of a target date just for us to keep track of when you might have a draft analysis? I know you don't have a CFO yet and all that kind of stuff, but so give me a later date. No, just something in time for the budget.
I think the September timeframe is reasonable. I'm certainly not a stranger to indirect costs. We had them in the prior town I came from, so it's a matter of just putting the policy together, taking a look at the numbers, you know, fixed costs are a little easier and that percentage of time and figuring out, you know, what's fair and whatnot, so yeah.
Okay. All right. Great. That's good. So the up page two, I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything. Under budget recommendations and goals, it said, increase the school department budget to guard against any loss of state or federal aid. But then I don't see any discussion to potential losses of state or federal aid later in the document. Are we worried that even with the money that we are providing, that things could get worse? Or I just, there was just that statement sort of laid there and then there was no further discussion about potential downsides?
Yeah, that was, that bullet and that statement was something that was pulled from the town manager's presentation at the spring forum. So I don't actually have.
I think actually we could ask the town manager and county police chief.
Quietly. You're on the whole process, myself and the superintendent worked hand in hand. And that's something that she had brought to my attention, that she is concerned with, losing some of the COVID money and some of it has already fallen off. And, you know, some of it might get extended for another year. But over the next couple of years, we're certainly afraid that the school department will lose significant money that's been available during this COVID pandemic for funding and extra teachers and extra resources. So if you want to add it.
The specific question is, in this specific fiscal year that's coming up, are you worried that within that timeframe, we could lose resources?
I think they have. I think they already have. Approximately, if you count the 400,000 in, I believe it's ARCA funds that the town supplemented our budget with after our full allocation, that was a one-time funding amount of money to mitigate the impacts of COVID, which in a school department, they're a little different. In terms of students, the impact on COVID, it's not a one-year sort of mitigation of the impacts on the social emotional wellbeing of kids and the mental health crisis that we have seen, which entails needing more staff to work with children and keep class size at a decent level so that we can mitigate some of those issues that we're seeing, which is probably going to be a five-year plus project for us. So the 400,000 from the town, we're also losing a 252 grant, which is the American Rescue Plan Individuals with Disability Act. That was 190,105 dollars. That funded a teacher and two ESP salaries. We're losing, some of the 264, actually the whole 264 grant, it's not being brought back. That's 10,163 dollars. That was social emotional support for early childhood students and students with special needs who are kept at home and not able to be in school. And therefore, when we've gotten them back now, they're quite far behind where they should be. Also, the American Rescue Plan for homeless children and youth two, which is the 302 grant, 7,633 dollars, which is a minor amount of money, but it helps offset the transportation that we have to provide to students who during COVID have lost housing. Many of those students still don't have permanent housing and we are still obligated to pay and transport those students from where they are housed back to the community of Winthrop. The one-time ESER two and ESER one funding that were available last year and rolled into this year, that's also been gone. So the impact is about 680,000.
I don't want to, I don't want to cut you off because we've got a long way to go, but I think it would be helpful for the council to sort of simply have the things that we're losing in this next fiscal year. Because we'll hear from folks, I think the president responded to it, he said, it sounds like it's a lot of money going to the school department. Actually, a lot of it is offsetting money for important programs that you're losing. So it would be good to have one sheet, I think, for all the council members or when the constituents talk to us. I think that would just be helpful. So thank you. Do we have, and I don't know who to direct this question with, of all the federal funds that have come in, whether they're called, you know, since COVID, OPER, all the way through, the infrastructure money that's come through, do we have a series of easy to understand templates of money that's come in in fiscal year, sources and uses basically? Is that readily available to understand how we've been spending this money and see what's still left available and what we're proposing to spend?
I think on the, on the, on the school side, I can't say 100%. I think the superintendent could add a little more to the ESER money. On the town side with the OPER funds, I think we received, are receiving two tranches, about 2.6 million dollars each. I know the first tranche was received and that money went to go to, and it obviously is very specific as to what it can be used for. I know, as the superintendent said, 400,000 went to the schools last year. We have about a million two going to water and sewer.
Not looking for the numbers, just wondering if there's a document.
Oh, I'm sure there is a document that says where the money was spent, yes. And I don't even, have we received the second tranche yet? No, we haven't received the second tranche yet. And what it can be used for is any water and sewer projects, shovel ready projects.
We provided a list of what's been spent.
And obviously multiple money going to.
And also what's coming, just sort of templates circulating to the council members, et cetera, because I don't want to stand out. All right, that'd be great. I really, really, really liked your focus and the president's focus on trying to make sure we understand the condition of the capital plant that we own. And I like the categorization that you had of buildings, transportation, which is streets and sidewalks and crosswalks and all that stuff. And then recreational facilities and parks and all that. One of the things we do not have in this town, and I could hopefully be corrected by someone if I'm wrong on this, is we actually don't have what I would call modernized asset management software. That is the ability to then go out and evaluate the condition, the state of good repair buildings, be able to build up a backlog to state of good repair of all of these assets and then to be able to understand what our total liability is, to be able to rate things by safety, et cetera, et cetera, to plug in things like the fire station and allow the council to have a tool that would say, okay, we've got liabilities this big. We've got to do these sets of things first. We've got to figure out buckets of money that we can apply either for grants or for overrides or debt exclusions. That software, those software expenses are not extraordinarily expensive. When we had this presentation on though, just doing it for the water side, I think, if I remember, the master plan was like 200,000, but the software system was maybe 125,000? Steve, I could be off. But those guys presented.
I think, I think.
Asset management plan or the capital plan?
The software system to be able to enter data for a modernized asset management system.
I think the auditor made some assumptions during that meeting.
No, no, I was asking the consultant that did the audit. I think they said about 125. That's the number I have.
That was from the auditor, yes, yep.
Yeah. So we had an auditor on water and sewer that said, you need about 125 to be able to put an asset management system tied to a GIS system for the water and sewer distribution system in this town. In order to really understand the stuff about buildings and transportation and parks and rec, you really need asset management systems. And I would hope, maybe you don't do the all of those three categories in the first year, but that we would in year one, maybe focus on water and sewer and getting that program up, spending some money to get a person on the staff trained in that, being able to start entering data. Maybe in year two, we migrate to transportation, year three, et cetera. But I was disappointed that we don't, it's a great goal, but there's no action items behind it. And until and unless we get action items behind it, I think it's going to be very difficult for us to compete for grants as well as we should on the one hand and to argue for tax increases to the public on the other hand. So, you know, I count up 30, 40 million dollars around public safety, 60 million dollars in water and sewer, there's about 10 to 15 for phase two of the center revitalization project. So I'm already at 100 million dollars worth of stuff and I haven't talked about what the conditions of the schools are, what the conditions of other things are. So I just worry that until we get these systems in place and get the data in place, this council cannot make reasonable, have a reasonable discussion about how to move forward in that area.
Tony, Terry?
I know Matt, we might have not discussed this during the citizens' finance, but certainly we've heard the words from the council, certainly within the first six days, the new town manager knows this is an action item that he's following up on and certainly looking at some software. And I think rather shortly, you probably have a capital expense request from him by way of motion to address some of those issues.
So we'll see that in a revision to the capital.
Yeah, moving forward, there's good news that I find out that the school department's already using a software called Dude Solutions, School Dude, to attract their facilities maintenance. In my prior town, we contracted with that company to do what's called a facilities needs assessment and it gives you everything you want to know about all the town buildings. They'll come out and assess all the buildings and give us the next, you know, 25, 30 years out, what the expenses are going to be. And we use that as the bible to build our capital plan and then actually start to get you the cost you're looking for. So we're going to get some pricing on that and I'll be back in front of the council with some updates on that.
Okay. One editorial comment, you know, I'm a fan of the ferry, so I'll say every time I read something about the ferry being either unsustainable and all that, half the town is unsustainable. So just for those who insist on continuing to beat up the ferry, half the town is unsustainable. And that's on page eight.
I will quickly add on that, the ferry did start operations today. And I believe if the ferry brought in as much revenue today as it did in its first week of operations last year, so I think there was upwards of 90 art people that took the ferry today, the majority of them were from Winthrop. So that is very good news.
Very good news. Great. I was also glad to see the solid waste enterprise fund action, trying to get something in place by August. I think that's critical, that's a great move. So again, kudos to you. The staff person who's going to be shared by three different departments, public health. The staff person who's going to be shared by three different departments, public health, council aging, veterans aging, do we have a sense who that person's boss is to make sure someone doesn't get hired and they got three bosses and conflicting?
I think they're, in the budget for fiscal '22, it was Meredith.
Yeah, so those departments have been consolidated under the public health director. So, this part-time person would be answering to the public health director, who will then assess their job assignments based on the day and the need, or future goals to pass.
That's great, thank you. On the emergency energy fund, have we ever looked as a town into the state's purchasing program? I know when I was at the T as an example, even at the, even at the size of the T in buying diesel fuel, the state buys so much more diesel fuel, we were actually to get a 5% decrease in costs by buying our fuel through the statewide fuel contracts, and just wondering if, if you.
So, we do use the.
We charge us our fuel through.
We do, okay, all right, great, thank you. Direct, I think you've covered that, that was good. I asked a question about actionability, I'll pass for now and come back.
Sure.
I think most of my questions have been answered.
Councilor DiMarco.
Well, Councilor Aiello and Vice President Ruggiero pretty much answered all my questions. I just want to thank Matt for a great presentation that really makes it easy to understand. I'm not a finance person, so like, you know, for you to give that presentation, that really helped me a lot, so thank you very much, I thought that was a great presentation.
Councilor Belcher.
No questions.
Councilor Manchin.
Yes, thank you. Great presentation, your, your assessment and analysis is both high-level and granular, and you could tell that there's some really great analysis, and I'm not sure what you do, but I can tell you're very good at it, so. I do have some questions, and thank you to the whole finance committee, because I know it was, I went to a bunch and they did go on and on and on, and, but that was an impressive line of questions, was how, not just what, and the dollar amount, was like, how do you get this? And so, that granular level of analysis, I thought was so, was so good, and I'm, I'm really happy with your far-level, your far-reaching recommendations. My question off the bat is a process. So, you gave some dates right off the bat, which looks like we're kind of tight for time. So, you made some suggestions to the budget, which, do we even have the time to even like kind of add those in, or where are we at? We have to adapt on by the June 7th?
Yeah, we are going to make a motion tonight to uphold the recommendations from the Finance Commission. We will ask if there are any further amendments by councilors, and then at the next council meeting, we will, again, offer the opportunity to councilors to make amendments to the budget, and then we will vote on the budget. And this is something that I've brought up in terms of the timeframe, in terms of the, if you look at the charter, this is something that I've asked the ordinance review committee to look at, to change the verbiage, because it, it, it gives a very tight timeline. The budget is usually ready much more than 60 days prior to the beginning of the year, but once we get the budget, the clock starts ticking. So, the earlier we receive the budget, the earlier we have to vote on the budget, so, and it gives us an opportunity to learn more information along the way. So, I've asked the ordinance review committee to change that language in the charter to give us more flexibility. But we do have time, obviously, to vote in this, and we would vote in it at the next meeting, if by all, some catastrophe happened and we didn't get the vote next meeting, I would have a special meeting prior to the 14th. So, we have until the 14th of March to vote on this. Of June. 14th of June, which is, yeah.
Fair enough. Great, so there's good, this is, so, then, one of the questions I had was on your recommendation number nine, was the sick and vacation policy. Were you guys able to do any kind of cross-town, like, analysis of what's going on around the state as far as, you know, different policies? I know when the private sector is much different than the public sector, not to say that that private is always better, but there is some ability for companies that don't have to accumulate, pay for accumulated sick time, and so it doesn't become an ongoing burden over, over the course of the whole fiscal year, they can kind of unload if it's unused. Did you guys get a chance to do any kind of analysis on, on the sick and vacation policy?
So, we had a lot of conversation over the course of our deliberations about the liability associated with sick and vacation, and I think there's one thing that's important for everyone to understand, we're not talking about, you know, sort of the average municipal employer, I mean employee, they're not sort of racking up the liability, and they're not the source of, of the issues. There are a few, you know, contracts that allow for higher payouts, and our focus is just making sure that in the event, and we're not suggesting that's necessarily, well, I don't want to, I, what we're suggesting is that there'd be a process for understanding when you went to enter a contract like that, and if you do, that we start to prepay those liabilities. But, you know, I think there are some controls in place, and you really don't see the liability being lapped up by municipal employees generally, so I just want to make that clear, it's not as a word.
I was under the impression there's been a couple of major payouts for recent retirees, and so I just was curious that if we're going to be having a $100,000 payout for a retiring municipal employee, is there something that we can do to possibly, or that other towns are doing, to prevent that huge accumulation or to prepay it so that it's not such a one-time lump sum that we have to hit with?
I, I think a best practice would be to make sure that it's transparent and that it's, that it's funded, and so at some point, putting in mechanisms to ensure that it gets funded, and that part of the recommendation, based on our deliberations, was to, you know, potentially set up a special revenue fund so that we could start to actually pre-fund, whether it be, you know, you know, sort of reversion from those departments or other opportunities to be able to start to put away some of those dollars, but I think pre-funding it is probably best practice.
Are there any towns that you know of, or cities, rather, that actually don't actually, they just say use it or lose it? Is that in place anywhere in the, in the state that you know of?
Well, I think, I, I don't want to speak for other towns, because I actually don't know what other municipalities are doing, and we did not have an opportunity to explore that with a lot of detail. But I do think that, you know, there are certainly use it and lose it, so you're only allowed to carry over so much. I mean, there are restrictions in place, and so I don't think this is an area where there's a huge.
Abuse.
Abuse, thank you. But I do think identifying where you do have those higher liabilities and making sure they're funded is the recommendation we're going to go with.
Thank you. So, I was, I was there for the spring forum, and I was impressed then, too, with the granular level of information that Terry shared at the time, and, and I also noticed that there, in that process of creating a budget, there was the ability to estimate revenues and estimate future loss or expenses. And when you estimate, you have the ability to be both conservative or optimistic. In your assessment as the chair of the FinCom or Finance Commission, would you say that the estimates for revenue were conservative for the fiscal year 2023?
Yes.
And so, you feel as though that there could be more revenue than was estimated?
I think, I think potentially, yes. I mean, if you look at sort of prior years and you look at sort of the growth that's been assumed when building the budget, yes, I think there's reason, every reason to expect that local receipts may come in higher than what's, what's been budgeted. I think the, the challenge that the, the town has this year and going forward is that we're building in $450,000 of one-time revenues to support operations, and so the real question is, are they so conservative that when they come in over, over projections, that you're going to be able to make up or close that deficit? Probably, probably not entirely, I don't, you know, I don't, that, that's where the, that's where the challenge, I think, with the talent lies, from our perspective.
Just to balance that one-time funding from ARPA with new revenues?
With base revenues.
Base revenues.
Ongoing, reoccurring base revenues.
One of the things that I've wondered about is, there seems to be some type of state review of our assessment policies. I don't know if you are aware of that, I saw that in the town manager's report, and I was just wondering if revenue is limited, obviously, by the, the, what is it, the 2% or?
Two and a half.
Two and a half? And so, but you can have growth by having new additions or new buildings or what have you. So, is that where you're hoping, is that where you see the, the biggest opportunity of revenue for the fiscal year 2023 year?
So, I think that sort of gets a little bit beyond what I think I'd probably comment on or that the commission reviewed. I think one of the things to be mindful of is the commission does have some constraints, and one of those constraints is that we don't actually get to adjust revenues, we can only adjust spending, and it can only be up and down, and so, to the extent that we are presented with the town manager's budget, and those town, and that budget provides us with the assumptions around revenue, it allows us to make, you know, some informed opinions to be able to answer your question, but in terms of strategies for increasing revenue, it's not something that the commission had an opportunity to really delve into, and so I defer to the council president or perhaps the town manager on, on, on those strategies.
I, I definitely will. I do have, I love your suggestions, and as, as Councilor Aiello pointed out, the capital, long-range capital planning on number four, the recommended change in number four was as fantastic, and as was the number five, the new DPW Division for Trees and Parks and Maintenance. But in that recommendation, we're not actually voting upon that recommended change, because that was more of a hypothetical? Is that correct?
That's correct. I think hypothetical, I like to think it's a little more than hypothetical, I'd like to think it's something that we could actually see happen over the next fiscal year. I think there is a recognition that there's a lot of recommendations in this report, and a lot of these recommendations are pretty heavy-lipped, and we recognize that, you know, it's a lot to put on, on the town manager and the department heads, but I also think there's, you know, shall you say, a bit of a pent-up demand, you know, we've, you know, had vacancies in some key positions for a while, and there's some stuff that we've been talking about trying to do, and in some cases, been holding off and waiting for the two new town manager book where we really embark on some of these changes, and so we recognize it's a lot, it's going to take some time to do, but we're hoping that there could be at least a plan in place this fiscal year for how that would work, and I think the more critical needs are, are the Miller Field, the Center Business District, it's really looking at those assets that we've put not just a few hundred thousand, but millions of dollars into, and have no resources right now for, for maintaining them, and I think that's a, that's something we're, we're concerned about, and so having a plan in place, even if it's going to be a multi-year plan to get that in place and funded, I think is a good first step from, from our perspective.
So, in your, in your assessment of where the money's coming from and moving it around to make sure that dollar-for-dollar, everything is spoken for, do you see where that money could come from to help finance the upgrade or repair of Miller Field's AstroTurf, as well as, let's say, the CBD and so forth? Or is it, do you have like a set place where that comes from?
We don't have a set place or a set recommendation, I can tell you that there are members of the Finance Commission that I think are, are much more versed in, in sort of the capital funding and where potential pockets of money could be down the road for this, and had been some of those discussions, we stopped short of making any of those specific recommendations with the idea that we need really the town manager working with the department heads, particularly, you know, to, to sort of come up with a recommendation.
Here's one that I would love for you to answer, and that would be, where would we find money to get a survey done? Like, if something simple as that, like where the old middle school needs to be redeveloped, there may need to be some preliminary work that needs to be done, where does that money come from? Is there like a budget that, from the general fund, that could be used for something as small as a $5,000 to $10,000 survey?
So, I think there's a few areas where money could be found, I mean, certainly at the end of the year, potentially through free cash, it could be some money redirected. I think, you know, the council has a reserve, potentially, for $50,000 funded in this budget that could potentially fund that. The capital plan could fund, capital programs can fund, the capital plan can fund one-time studies, it's an appropriate use of capital dollars. ARPA money could be a potential use, and I think the other thing to, to keep in mind right now is state-level resources between the state ARPA funds and the surplus at the state level, there are a lot of bills pending right now that are focused on capital infrastructure, both at the state and municipal levels, and so there may be pockets of money that we could explore for, for resources there. So, I do think there are some opportunities, particularly for a dollar amount of that size.
I want to, I wanted to say thank you again, and I'm just really thankful for this commission to be able to help move this town in the right direction. I feel like it's a very sophisticated, comprehensive report, and, and I thank you again.
Councilor Fusillo.
Having sat next to you for the last couple of months, I think all my questions are answered, thank you.
Councilor Honan.
See, and I have no questions, I do want to say it's been a pleasure to work with you these past couple of months.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure to work with the commission.
Councilor Aiello.
So, two quick follow-ups, and really more directed to the town manager than anybody else. With respect to recommendation number seven, increase efficiency and effectiveness, I'd like the purchasing power and specialized grant management stewardship elements in the recommendation, but there's also, I think, an opportunity to digitize some of our operations, and I was wondering if, prior to finalizing the budget, you could take a look at opportunities to digitize some of the operations and ensure that there's enough money in the budget to be able to undertake an analysis of which ones to do, et cetera, how you would implement it, because.
Take a look at that, sure.
I would be supportive of moving some money over to, to, to that area, and the other thing is, I'm, I'm glad that we're moving an inspection position from part-time to full-time in the overall building department. I still worry that we're understaffed in the whole inspection regime, and again, Tony, this will be a question to you, I, I have never been able to find with your permanent predecessors, I've never asked Terry, because I don't want to bug him too much on everything he's doing. A real crosswalk between all of the ordinances we have, the things that should be inspected, by who they should be inspected for, by, and whether or not we're funding those positions. I think we're probably very, very light on that stuff, and if you could take a look again, to the extent that there's willingness to move some money around for yet another position for critical inspections, I'd be supportive of that.
I'll take a look at that as well.
And I will say, I know at a couple of the meetings, a couple of the members of the Finance Commission were, and the Finance Commission as a whole, talked for a long period of time on adding an additional half-time person at inspectional services, and they talked about dollar amount, they talked about, you know, keeping it under benefit lines, and, you know, they just didn't think there was money right now, but that is something that they talked about for a long time for another half, half position. All right, there, there is a relatively lengthy motion that's coming out, which I will read in a minute, but before, and I want to thank the superintendent for spending some time and, and on prom night, deciding to be with us as her prom date instead of going to the prom, so I thank her for that. But if you wanted to make some suggestions to us, or offer any thoughts you have on the budget and the process.
Just that, you know, I appreciate the work that was done, in terms of my understanding of it, I enjoyed a lot of it, so one thing that does resonate with me is, is the awareness of structural deficits. With the public schools is a continual structural deficit. In my five years, we've asked for at least $1.9 billion and above million dollars to get ourselves to our needs-based budget, and each year, because of the state of the town and our obvious revenue issue, and hopefully, we have a spending issue, each year, we are under level service, so those structural deficits, the deficits that we have growing well. When COVID hit, it's a whole new world for us, so our needs have changed and grown in different directions, and one-time funding of certain items is not going to mitigate the impacts of COVID on children or on teachers. Safety and security is, is our number one priority, thankfully, and with the public schools, thanks to the chief fire department, the DPW, for working with us to make sure that those things are covered, those needs also continue to grow. We're close to 2,000 students in our district and over 350 employees, so I understand the impacts of the cost for insurance for our staff members and retirement and whatnot. I also believe that we can't continue to rely on these one-time sources without impacting the long-term financial stability of the schools, but more importantly, the impact on the quality of the education that we're able to, to provide. We are the largest department in the town, I am aware of that, and again, Councilor Aiello asked the question about what's going away and what that list is, I have a running list of what we had during COVID and what's going away, it's, you know, it's close to $2 million worth of funding in the last two years. So, you know, I. in the last two years. So, you know, I appreciate the study. I concur with the financial planning and the action planning, the strategic planning to move us forward. I think it does work. We've done a lot of that in the school district, and it has behooved us. So we are thankful for any allocation of funds. I'll always scream loud to be fully funded for the school department. I do have a loud voice sometimes and a temper tantrum here or there, but I don't want to underestimate the, or disregard the costs for the other departments and the money that they need. In our community, we have a revenue issue, and we know it. My father has drilled that into my head for about 25 years, focusing, we have a spending issue. If you put the amount of time into researching that, that the people in this room have, we'd have a better sense of what we need to do in the future. So I would thank you again for the deep work and the FinCon. It's appreciated.
Thank you, Superintendent. And again, I don't want to in any way underestimate the amount of incredible work that our assistant CFO has done in this. Robbie has just taken on more responsibility than he should have had to do, and can't thank him enough for all the time and effort he's put in. He is always available, and if he's not available, he gets back to you right away. And, you know, over the last year, I know Terry would probably echo my sentiments, but we've been without a CFO, and this is, we've basically gone through two budget cycles. One was just enacting the first budget and then completely going through this. And I could say in all certainty that we wouldn't have been able to do this without you, so I thank you, Robbie, for that.
Thank you. Councilor President, if I could just also echo that on behalf of the commission. Robbie's been at every one of our deliberations and has been available outside of those deliberations to provide us information, and we certainly could not have done anything that, close to this without Robbie's help. And it's been, like I said, he's been with us for every single meeting and sometimes available outside of that. So thank you, Robbie.
So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to read a proposed motion that came out of the FinCon. I am not going to make the motion because I can't, and I will ask for someone to move the motion. It is long, it is a little cumbersome, but just give me a minute, and it will be in written form for the town clerk. So the motion would be for general fund increases. The motion would be to increase line 0124152, which is the purchase of service line for inspectional services. The amount originally budgeted was 11,500. The proposed change is to add 13,500, so the new fiscal '23 amount would be 25,000. Another to increase line 0142557, emergency energy, a new line item. There was no original appropriation. The appropriation now would be 25,580. Impacts to the general fund would be as a result of the following three. Decrease line 67163059, pox and rec indirect charges. The original proposed was 78,369. The amount adjusted, which would affect the general fund, would be 17,238, which would make a new amount of indirect cost of 55,394. Decrease line 67267259, rink indirect costs. Original proposed was 64,474. The proposed change would reduce by 14,493. The new amount would be 45,709. Decrease line 75229559, harbor master indirect cost had previously, the proposed budget was 40,084. The, the amount changed was 6,680. The new amount would be 33,404. The total of those additions to the general fund would be 87,500, and the offsets to those would be. Eliminate general fund contributions to the OPEB at this time, line 0191051. The original amount to be funded was 25,000. The amendment is to reduce that by 25,000. The new amount would be zero. Decrease line 0142051. This is to allocate a portion of the DPW director's salary to the trash enterprise fund. This would be a reduction of 14,500 from the DPW line item. The new amount would be 473108. Decrease, eliminate a stipend from the procurement, which had been stipended for 11,000. The new number would be zero. It would be eliminated by 11,000. Decrease line 0191051 to reduce the pox and rec subsidy. The original amount to be subsidized to pox and rec was 50,000. The proposed would eliminate 25,000 from that, which would have a remaining subsidy of 25,000. And to decrease line 01543757, which would be the veterans' benefit line. This line was originally funded for 30, 51,200. The amount of the reduction would be 12,000. The new line item would be 39,200. Those changes come out to 87,500. So I would ask for someone to make that motion made by
I would like to make that motion and move it forward.
Councilor DeMarco, second by Councilor Fusillo, and as well as Councilor Belcher, I guess. And any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Councilor Honan.
Yes.
Councilor Fusillo.
Yes.
Councilor Munson.
Yes.
Councilor Belcher.
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco.
Yes.
Councilor Flotkot.
Yes.
Councilor Aiello.
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Lutere.
Yes. The other recommendation, which I will ask for a motion for, is to increase in solid waste enterprise fund, increase line 6705, permanent employees by 14,500, making that line go from 71,342 to 85,842. And to decrease the tipping fees, 6,070. And to decrease the OPEB charge of 8,430. Those will offset each other. There's a motion by Councilor Belcher, there's a second by Councilor Aiello, I believe raises hand. I want you to point, Dan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilor Honan.
Yes.
Councilor Fusillo.
Yes.
Councilor Munson.
Yes.
Councilor Belcher.
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco.
Yes.
Councilor Belcher.
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco.
Yes.
Councilor Flotkot.
Yes.
Councilor Aiello.
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Lutere.
Yes. The other recommendation, which I will ask for a motion for, is to increase in solid waste enterprise fund, increase line 6705, permanent employees by 14,500, making that line go from 71,342 to 85,842. And to decrease the tipping fees, 6,070. And to decrease the OPEB charge of 8,430. Those will offset each other. There's a motion by Councilor Belcher, there's a second by Councilor Aiello, I believe raises hand. I want you to point, Dan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilor Honan.
Yes.
Councilor Fusillo.
Yes.
Councilor Munson.
Yes.
Councilor Belcher.
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco.
Yes.
Councilor Flotkot.
Yes.
Councilor Aiello.
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Lutere.
Yes. The other recommendation, which I will ask for a motion for, is to increase in solid waste enterprise fund, increase line 6705, permanent employees by 14,500, making that line go from 71,342 to 85,842. And to decrease the tipping fees, 6,070. And to decrease the OPEB charge of 8,430. Those will offset each other. There's a motion by Councilor Belcher, there's a second by Councilor Aiello, I believe raises hand. I want you to point, Dan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilor Honan.
Yes.
Councilor Fusillo.
Yes.
Councilor Munson.
Yes.
Councilor Belcher.
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco.
Yes.
Councilor Flotkot.
Yes.
Councilor Aiello.
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Lutere.
Yes. The other recommendation, which I will ask for a motion for, is to increase in solid waste enterprise fund, increase line 6705, permanent employees by 14,500, making that line go from 71,342 to 85,842. And to decrease the tipping fees, 6,070. And to decrease the OPEB charge of 8,430. Those will offset each other. There's a motion by Councilor Belcher, there's a second by Councilor Aiello, I believe raises hand. I want you to point, Dan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilor Honan.
Yes.
Councilor Fusillo.
Yes.
Councilor Munson.
Yes.
Councilor Belcher.
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco.
Yes.
Councilor Flotkot.
Yes.
Councilor Aiello.
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Lutere.
Yes. And the last one, I will ask for a motion to decrease the pox and rec OPEB charge of 2,025, and the decrease the rink OPEB charge. There were no line items for these because there was never any previous line item for it. So there will be line items created of 1,227. That total is 2,500. Is there a motion for that?
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Fusillo, second by Councilor DeMarco. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilor Honan.
Yes.
Councilor Fusillo.
Yes.
Councilor Munson.
Yes.
Councilor Belcher.
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco.
Yes.
Councilor Flotkot.
Yes.
Councilor Aiello.
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Lutere.
Yes. The other recommendation, which I will ask for a motion for, is to increase in solid waste enterprise fund, increase line 6705, permanent employees by 14,500, making that line go from 71,342 to 85,842. And to decrease the tipping fees, 6,070. And to decrease the OPEB charge of 8,430. Those will offset each other. There's a motion by Councilor Belcher, there's a second by Councilor Aiello, I believe raises hand. I want you to point, Dan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilor Honan.
Yes.
Councilor Fusillo.
Yes.
Councilor Munson.
Yes.
Councilor Belcher.
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco.
Yes.
Councilor Flotkot.
Yes.
Councilor Aiello.
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Lutere.
Yes. And the last one, I will ask for a motion to decrease the pox and rec OPEB charge of 2,025, and the decrease the rink OPEB charge. There were no line items for these because there was never any previous line item for it. So there will be line items made are great, but I think some of the most important things were the things that we weren't able to make, including the maintenance and other such items that were brought up by Matt. So again, if there's nothing else, I would, DPW director.
Is it appropriate to ask?
Absolutely.
I just want to just speak a little bit about the maintenance department.
Yes.
The division you recommended.
Yes.
That's for trees and parks and that.
Well, it's not established. I'm not saying it's under yacht. You don't have to do.
My concern is...
I'm not saying, hey, here's something else for you to do.
No, no, it's not that. It's not even that.
Okay.
It's not the extra workload, nothing like that. Structurally, DPW is a consolidated department. So we're already down nine people.
Right.
So every day is an exercise of prioritization, right? Water main breaks, you know, cemetery interments. If we want to basically say, you know, we have a division that's just going to concentrate on trees and parks or whatever that division goal is going to be, I wouldn't be able to operate them in a consolidated department without, in other words, I'd be putting three, potentially three people, I'm just saying, three people aside saying, okay, you're going to do this, when all these other priorities kind of trump, you know...
Understandably so.
...malt beds in a park on that particular day. So I just want to...
I think some of it is the...
It would actually be a standalone.
I think some of it is just the language that I might be using incorrectly. And some of this is money to put aside, for example, Millerfield, to have some funding mechanism that we're going to be able to put aside X amount of money. So at the end of the life, the useful life of that field, we could say, we're ready to put a new one in. Here's the money. It doesn't cost the taxpayers anything more. We're not asking for a debt exclusion. We're prepared. So some of it is that. Some of it is maintenance of stuff like the stamped concrete down at the CBD that needs to be sealed every X amount of years. And that, you know, all of a sudden, we're going to come up and say, oh, we need 25 gallon drums. They're $350 a drum. Where's the money? So some of it is putting money aside, almost like a, you know, but in...
That's super important. You've got to have, whether it's going to be contracted out, whether it's going to be materials, whatever it is. It was just confusing me a little bit about this division.
No, no, no. We're not going to be asking you to have employees right now, you know, divert more employees. But I do go down the center every morning, and I see Gioso down there, and they're hosing down flower. And I'm like, who's going to do this every day? Are we going to have the people to do that? Because it looks beautiful. The sod is incredible. It's being watered all the time. The plant beds are being watered. It's nice, but we have to maintain it.
What it takes to keep it.
I don't want somebody to come to me and say, wow, that really looks great. And that same person come to me next year and say, this looks like crap, you know? And that's what happens too often sometimes. And not to the fault of anyone. Sometimes it's just, like you're saying, prioritizing. But it's going to be a more well-defined plan and thought as to how it's going to be done. Police chief.
Add a couple of things that I heard. Certainly, the commission has done a great job, and I appreciate working with them every year, more so this year than past years. I just want to be clear, just on a couple of things. Revenue, yes, we're very conservative on revenue. We are in the middle of a recession. It could get worse all the time. So we wanted to make sure that we didn't hedge our bets and budget to align. So it gives us that flexibility to, on our recap sheet, which Robbie has taught me a lot about, to make those adjustments on the fly if we have to. Assistant Town Manager's position, we eliminated because of lack of funding. That's something that should not just be forgotten and thrown to the wolves. It's something that we should keep on our plate. It's a very important position. Being up there for a year, drinking through a fire hose every day is no fun. When you're going away, you should be able to say, this is the person in charge. It's continuity of government. Tony goes down tomorrow. Who is there? Who is the next person that steps up and carries on everything that was...
That would be you.
It shouldn't be a police chief. I was glad to do it, but it shouldn't be. We started working on continuity of government a few years, about six years ago, with the deputy chief in the police department. And now we still have to worry about the fire department and Town Manager's office. Aaron is there when Steve certainly goes on vacation. So we just want to make sure that those priorities, we had to be taken up because we needed the funding for it, but it's still a priority, I think, of the town. Sick and vacation time, so every year, June 30th, Robbie demands that we submit all our sick and vacation time that's unused to him for an accounting of what our liability is. So every June 30th, that goes over to Robbie. The assessments review, I think it's worth mentioning and being cautious over new construction that you see out there right now. That does not come on our books until we have a substantial completed project. So the Jefferson Street will not come on our books this year. I think it has to be by December 31st.
The assessments are about a year behind.
Yeah. So you've got to look at that when you're looking at budgets. We're not going to pick up those projects this fiscal year, but next fiscal year. So just, I just want to make sure everyone is cautious. And trash, I know some people were asked about the process. That's certainly going to be a more likely ordinance change, which then will be a recommendation from the Town Manager's office to the council, so the council still has, I know we gave Tony a bunch of deadlines. Some of those deadlines got to be shifted to the council. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Well, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Counselor DiMarco, seconded by Counselor Belcher. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If there's no, the ayes have it. Thank you.